The meeting of the Town of Abboton, special meeting to order today on April 15th at 10:00 p.m. We will have a pledge of allegiance. Shall we all stand and pray this time?
For the allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which there stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
May I have the roll call, please?
Councilmember Lee.
Here.
Vice Mayor Carlson.
Here.
Mayor Lewis. Here. Councilmember Dobby and Councilmember Winter are excused. Before we get into our, I just want to have a moment of silence for the people in Boston today. It's a part, two people have been pronounced dead because of a bomb, two bombs going off at the finish line. This is a personal moment for me because 12 years ago on this day, I ran the Boston Marathon and I crossed that finish line. And that was in 2001, and then six months later was 9/11. So our world changed 12 years ago, but maybe it hasn't changed. So if we could just have just a moment of silence, I appreciate that. I appreciate you all indulging here. So if we have any public comments, now's the time for members of our public to speak and keep your comments focused on what is on our agenda today, which is the fiscal year 2013-2014 budget study session. Do I have any members of the public that wish to speak at this time? Saying that, I'll bring you back to our regular agenda and turn it over to our city manager, George Roberts, and our finance director, Robert Hare III, to present our fiscal year 2013-2014 budget presentation.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So the council, it's actually going to be a team effort today. I'm going to be doing most of the big overview kind of talking, but as you get into the Q&amp;A section for particular budgets, all the department heads are here today to answer any questions you might have. This is a, next slide, Robert. This is a broad brush approach to our first budget workshop. We're going to have at least two more before the council gets to the adoption of the budget in June. At those subsequent meetings, which will take place probably one before the goals meeting and then the second one after the goals meeting at the end of May, we'll fill in a lot of the other details. But what we want to do at this meeting is provide the council with a higher level look at the budget from this perspective. We're still just finishing mid-year and we've got some details from the new OPEP report. We've got some expectations for police coverage in the future, and we wanted to identify some trends. You've already seen a five-year financial forecast. That was at the mid-year presentation. That's included here as well in the slides as well. So if the council has some big picture questions, that's what we're here today to look at and provide us some focus moving forward. Next slide, Robert. So this is a three-year at a glance for fiscal year 12, 13, and 14. You can see the revenue projections there going from 12 to 14 in particular. That's where it's going to be most consistent. The revenues in 2013 included the one-time revenues from Facebook and settlement of a lawsuit. That's why that's kind of out of proportion. The expenditures in 2012 are also out of proportion. That's because of the one-time $1.2 million PERS side fund payment to pay off the public safety side fund for pension obligations. That's not part of the 13 or 14 budget. So in reality, if you kind of look at the fiscal year 12 revenues, fiscal year 13 expenditures, and then comparing those with the 2014 expenditures and revenues, you'll see more consistency in the budget moving forward. Next slide, Robert. Here just shows that same sort of thing in graph form. You can see the dramatic difference in 2011, 12 expenditures and 2012, 13 revenues. You see, taking out those things, our revenues do exceed our expenditures and likely expenditures in both of those years. The fund balance, this is particularly our general fund. We're not covering any of the other special funds. Those are pretty isolated expenditures and revenues connected to those like the library fund. But this is strictly the town's general fund. In fiscal year 12, we have a beginning balance of 6.2 million, and we're expecting to end in 2014 with a balance of about 8.9 million as the three years progress. In 2012, we had the deficit of 15,102, and 2013, because of the one-time revenues, we're expecting 1.5. You saw that at mid-year. That was the projection for mid-year. The projection for 2014 is a net change of 1.2 million on top of that. Here's how that breaks down into the specific reserves that the town has. We've got the 15% emergency reserve, 20% basic reserve, and a building reserve, and then the reserve side fund, which is the building miscellaneous amounts as well. So we've got a lot of little pockets that money's being saved in. And one of the comments that I made at mid-year is, let's not do that. One of the comments made at mid-year is that the town should look at allocating a higher single reserve, say 50% of its general fund operating budget, instead of too many, 15% for emergency, 20% for general, and then a reserve side fund beyond that, or building reserve beyond that. Just put it in one bucket, general fund, operating reserve of at least 50%. The building reserve is restricted. The reserve side fund, that's 704,313, that's the PERS side fund payment, right? That was supposed to be paid off by the end of this fiscal year, by June 30th, and that would eliminate the last remaining pension side fund that we have with CalPERS.
And then just to point out, in 2014, we have in there the 704,000, but it will be paid in '13, so that 704,000 will just move down to the unrestricted. So it'll be about 4.5 million on unrestricted side. We just put it in there as a placeholder just to show you that the reserve side fund is a portion of our fund balance that we're passing through.
So we did have some overall highlights for revenues and expenditures. Some of those, you see, we're projecting revenues, property tax revenues, at a conservative 3%. We think that's a pretty attainable year in Africa, in particular since last year it was close to 9. Anything beyond that, of course, would go into the town's unrestricted reserve, which again ties back to the allocation of about 50% general fund operating reserve policy. The building department revenues show signs of increases. Enfranchised tax revenues remain stable. All other charges or expenditures, revenues that we're looking at, which is slightly decreasing them by 2%. On the expenditure side, we've got that new resolution for local miscellaneous. The APOA is up for negotiation in September of 2013, so there may be changes as well. The pension contribution is going to be picked up full 7% by the employee beginning July 1st. And then we've capped, this is just strictly related to the unrepresented staff, we've capped the healthcare contribution at 750, 1,400, 1,500, respectively, for the different levels of benefit plans. And that basically means that as costs go up, the town's costs don't go up. Employees obligated for that difference. We also have changes, well, what you just saw on the previous slide, that's about 4.5% savings. We also have changes on the new OPEP study. It shows a 30% in savings compared to fiscal year 2013's arc that we had on the 642,000 or so. We have a 30% savings on that. The finance committee just saw that at their last meetings, that refresh came through. So that's going to be going down. The new PERS rate for local safety is 27.877, and non-safety is 15.844. If we pay off that 704,313, that employee, local miscellaneous side fund is going to drop to about 11.1%.
Will drop from 15...
From 15...
15.844 to 11.1.
Correct, 11.1.
And that's about 49,000 per year savings from the 15.8% of the...
Eight plus 49,000 per year savings.
And this, of course, assumes that the parcel tax continues at the current rate, giving 60% to public safety. And that's 1.116. 20,000.
20,000.
A thousand a year, right?
To make it great.
So this slide just shows you how those revenues are distributed to get to that 11.9, which includes the parcel tax, 100%. 9% of it's from the special parcel tax. The most of our resident revenue, as you would expect, comes from property taxes, about 64% of our revenue from there. And then building revenues are next highest, and then the special parcel tax revenue to the general fund. This just breaks it down by percentage in pie chart. Very pretty. By department, our expenditures to get to that 10.7 for our budget for fiscal year 14, just a preliminary look, shows how that's divided up amongst the various different departments. Of course, the largest of which is, again, public safety. That's where most of our personnel are as well. We are in the service industry here, so...
So could you just detail non-departmental a little bit?
Detail non-departmental?
What?
Oh, what constitutes a non-departmental expense? These are general things that, you know, new copier for the offices, a new laser fish system for the city clerk, you know, to document records, audio system for the council chambers, things like that during the non-departmental phase, as well as...
Liability, insurance.
Insurance.
And then back in when we paid the 11.12, the PERS side fund for public safety was paid out of this non-departmental, so that's...
The 1.2?
Yes.
Non-departmental is basically things that affect everybody but aren't specific to any one specific department.
George, when are we going to see a head count, some numbers?
A head count?
Yeah.
Staffing?
Yeah. I mean, that is really the key driver of many of these expense categories, the number of people we have.
Yeah, well, there's no proposed changes to the local miscellaneous?
Yeah. I'd like to see the numbers of what we have and what we projected and what we have on and so forth.
That'll come in the detail as we move into the next...
Well, I'd like to have it today in terms of the head counts, so we can talk about it a little bit.
Like to have the numbers today?
Yes. Well, like the head numbers.
What do you have?
Well, in finance, we have three conditions.
I'm more interested in the police department.
Police department?
Oh, that one we're going to get to. That one is a good discussion. Overview by department by percent, next one. So admin and city council. And within the admin department, these are some of the basic things that the administration does, but in terms of their budget detail. Next slide, Robert. The admin department's decreasing by 68,000. There's no changes in personnel. We've got the city manager, city clerk.
Office specialist.
Office specialist. That's within the admin department. No changes to staffing proposed? City, go back one, sorry. But within that department, like I said, there's a $68,000 savings from...
The police department.
Most of that savings is in the expenditure category, 672, 1213 to 626?
Oh.
Expenditures, 1213 to 1314?
That's a savings, that's actually...
A reduction.
What is about 49,000?
Reduction in expenditures?
Yeah.
Oh, from 14, from 13 to 14.
Correct.
Okay.
And it comes across a number of different categories. You know, you don't have to cover relations category in the next year's budget. We don't have the human resources contract to do a manual, because that's going to be done in this fiscal year. Some decreases in the meetings. Other contract services have been decreased. Then you've got the same savings within the employee portion for CalPERS pension swap that we did with the employee staff. That saves $22,000.
A little bit to your memory.
Hands up. City attorney budget. And if you notice, on both admin and city council and city attorney budget here as well, there's no revenue side to their equation. It's all on the expenditure side. City attorney's a contract position, and that one's basically static quo, hasn't changed, although he does bring in some revenue, as you saw with the one-time case. We've got one-time revenue on 134.
He promises to do revenue.
Mr. Commerce.
Running out of lawsuits to get money.
Oh, what a bummer.
That's a goal, right? One-year goal.
I think that was a mandate.
All right, then we got the finance department. The finance department has an overall expenditure reduction of $48,000 projected in this fiscal year as well.
What's the staffing in the finance department?
Finance department has a finance director, an accountant, and a finance specialist.
Accounting technician.
Accounting technician position. And again, it's across the various different categories, contract services, business license services increase, got a little bit there, but overall, it goes down about 48,000 from one year to the next. So it's decreasing their operational budget as well.
Does this include a full-time accounting position?
Yeah, three full-time positions.
Okay, because we currently have a four-fifths time.
No, she's currently full-time. She was budgeted in this particular budget full-time as well, and was just hired to fill that position that was budgeted for.
Oh, good.
So she's on board.
Good.
The one thing within this budget that will be a discussion in the finance committee will be the audit services contract. It's currently budgeted at about 46,000 with the new RFP that'll go out for that. We'll probably recommend that we increase that to about 60,000 if we look at the audit services. If that's something I'm sure...
Chair, can I ask one question?
Really?
Yes, certainly. Mr. Conlin.
Three people for 600,000, what is that?
Three people for 600,000. Robert, you want to go into a little bit of detail there?
Well, the salaries component is about 460,000. Operation expenditures, about 163,000. That's what makes up the two components. Overhead is a big portion, 460, and then the remaining amount, 163, is about, is the general operation maintenance for this department.
Thank you. Planning department, contract services, revenues to expenditures. Planning department increases by about 41,000 this year, and that's due to the housing element being completed in this fiscal year.
So this chart looks like there's more expenses and not enough revenue to cover all the expenses. So in doing our cost allocation fee study, we'll really recommendation to increase planning? We should close that deficit gap, do you know, or...
There will be recommendations.
Just giving, providing resident services, you know, on a kind of a free basis, like free counter time or something that we're actually subsidizing. It's that, I know that we had talked about as a policy from council before, that we would, that we should provide some resident services that are on charge to them. Like if a resident comes in and just wants a quick meeting with the planner about, well, do you think I can do this in this, in my house? They wouldn't have to fill out a permit fee and pay things. And so how much of that is, and you can answer that, or Lisa?
Sure. Well, with the last fee study, like you indicated, the council specifically chose a fee that was lower than the full cost recovery to cover some of those services that you mentioned. I believe with the fee study that's currently undergoing, they'll provide with you a fee that would cover all of the expenses, including the housing element every 10 years, the general plan every 15 to 20 years, and that the recommendation would be to have kind of a reserve fund that you would move money into for the housing element and general plan updates. So there's a dedicated fund when we do need to come forward to address those. The revenue very closely matches the staff costs, but then there's some, you know, other office expenses as well, and then the housing element, as the city manager mentioned this time.
Sure. Residents aren't charged to come in and talk to Lisa, just ask a question, too, if she's at the camera.
George, why is it going in from 2012 to 2014 by about 40%?
Part of it has to do with, I'm sorry. Would you like me to answer that?
Yeah, well, part of it's the housing elements.
Women, the housing elements this year, right?
There was 20,000 in the 1213 budget, another 20, another 40 the next.
I was talking about the delta between, you know, two years ago. There. And so if you had a housing element in 2012, that meant it didn't have the housing element, the expense would have been lower, so the increase would have been even higher for some of that. What's driving that?
From 1112 to 1213?
To 1214.
1214.
The 1214, what's driving the increase is the housing element, it's 60,000.
Now, housing elements in 2014?
We, but we paid 20,000 in this year, but there's another 40,000 requirement, so we budgeted 60,000 in there for...
What do we do with 40,000 next year in housing element? What's the task we have to be performing?
Certainly. So in the last fiscal year, we had budgeted $20,000, and we're not merely using a very, very small amount of that. We're using this fiscal year, it's mostly to attend the CCAG meetings. So we'll have a significant cost savings this year in that housing on the line item. For next fiscal year, we're recommending that we retain the services of a consultant to prepare the housing element, as well as the necessary environmental review. And then there's a small amount that'll be budgeted as well for the staff oversight and coordination.
So it's a check kind of carryover from one year to the next.
But the housing element we're preparing is almost the same as what we prepared before, isn't it?
The state does require an update every 10 years.
But one of it is the same as we prepared before.
A lot of the numbers we need to update and change, so we could certainly meet with you to go get those details.
I'd love to see that.
Sure.
I agree with the vice mayor Carlson in the Reno meetings that we've been attending. It has been almost kind of specifically designed so that the cities aren't burdened with having to reinvent the wheel every time the housing element is supposed to be refreshed. And they're trying to make it more, like I said, like a cookie cutter, so that we just kind of refresh it with the new numbers, and we don't have to do a huge study in environmental reports.
Well, there's no reason we need, we'll be reinventing the wheel.
We'll take a look at the numbers. We really need to have that.
Because from what we're getting on a county level, is that we should not have to be spending the amount of money that we have spent in the past.
True.
And not that, not to say that our planners aren't worth it, but if we don't have to go out and hire an outside consultant to do the other, you know, additional work, I don't think that we should do that.
Well, if we don't have to do the work, we're not going to do it. But we do have to complete the required state mandate.
We understand that. Just we're questioning the amount of money.
And so just to be clear, you've got 20,000 in our 2012-2013 budget.
Which then what's been?
Well, it was 20,000 in our 2012 budget, which he hasn't, they haven't been spending, that is rolling over to our 2013 budget. And then the 2013-14 budget, you click in another 60. Is that right?
2013-14 is 40.
Oh, total 60.
Right. Well, what about the, all the work that's going to have to be done with the committee as to a civic center or whatever it falls?
Oh, that has nothing to do with this.
That wouldn't be expensive in this category?
No, no.
Why would that be expensive?
Would probably be within the public works or capital projects category.
Capitalized.
Capitalized.
Yeah.
And if it needs to move through the planning department, then we would have it move through the planning department, but the expenditures would be out of the capital project.
Which we're not going over right now.
No.
That's our next study.
Yeah, right.
Okay, thank you.
The building side, as you know, is a straight contract for services percentage basis. So there, again, you're going to see the revenues hopefully exceeding expenditures within that department, but there are, you know, one-time expenditure categories that are connected directly to that service level. But overall, it should go down. It is going down one year to the next by 78,000 in terms of expenditures. The major fiscal...
I do. That's because I printed it. Oh, it didn't come in the...
In the handouts, that's down in the room.
I don't have the full issue.
It's there. Robert, the 86,000 is the major component of that 108,000. Or is that, that's called a work.
This building, the savings is about 78,000, and part of that is the change in, half of that is the salary benefit component for different changes. And then the O and M operating expenditures and maintenance, about 38,000 change. And a big portion of that is the technical services, the BKF. We had that budget this year with 84,000 for that category. This year, we're only budgeting 11,000, so that's smart now.
So we seem to not have enough handouts for...
Teresa, let's get some.
Okay, and do you have, so do you have the other ones? Could we maybe go to the ones that you do have?
Already good.
It just ends.
It just ends right there.
It's in the last couple pages. So we can go into the building department in great detail if you'd like.
I like one question anyway.
I have packets here. I don't know if Teresa left. I didn't realize that there wasn't in there, but they're in here. The building is in there.
Oh, okay, so then let's hand that in.
What? Someone tell Teresa not to make them? What's your formula or something for cotton? Building fees are every two years or three years maybe be adjusted based on past three years' experience as far as the revenues?
We're doing an actual fee study to determine what exactly those costs need to be. And that's completed...
But is that package in here all?
Not yet, no, because it was just completed. It's going to be adopted by the council, and then we'll put in the revenues and expenditure projections based on the fee study.
What, will it be up or down, or be...
I think most of the fees are going to be kind of static, Robert. Most of the fees came back from that fee allocation study, not changing a whole lot?
Not a whole lot, and we're winding down on that study, and we'll be bringing that to council in May. The only difference that was probably in there was maybe a category and the valuation portion from non-spaced housing to...
Non-happable space to habitable space?
Yes, because that was an issue in the old valuation. So in doing so, though, this new valuation, it's covering the fees and covering our costs.
We probably revisit those some of the assumptions, like I think one of the assumptions was amount of free time at the front desk.
Yeah, that's all part of the fee study. They talk to the all staff.
What the assumptions are, you know.
Yes, yes, sir. And on that, that's the cost, the hourly cost rate, that component, and that includes, staff was asked, okay, how much time do you spend answering questions at the counter? How much would you consider that? So that's built into there in this fee, and we'll go through that when, with the draft portion.
If I could just maybe look at the building, because in 2011, we, the 2011-2012 fiscal year was really the first year that we experienced with the reduction in force and the outsourcing. And there were variables that played in, like payment for compensation, you know, excess compensation for termination, things like that. So severances, that's it. And then so this fiscal year, 2012-2013, is really, is that a true picture of how we can, not yet.
Not yet.
So the 2013-2014 is what you're expecting more of the true picture to be. What I'm concerned about is, I guess, the reduction in revenue from even 2011. The 2011 revenue was 1.4 million, and even projected in 2013-2014, it's only 1.2 million. Now, I know that buildings should be on an uptick, but I, you know...
It is on an uptick, but it was on a downward trend in 1112.
It was on a downtick.
Yeah, downtick for a while, now it's heading back up.
Okay, but yeah, and I guess we had the previous year of 2010-2011. Okay, but, yeah, and I guess if we'd had the previous year of 2010, 2011, we would have seen it go up. But I guess the good news is, is that it is looking like it's coming into balance more, and we're not eating up the reserve.
Correct. And with the fee study completed, and when we, council adopts the new fee resolution, we'll have a truer picture going forward as well.
Is the road impact fee still around in these summers?
No.
It's been three years, or it's been prior to 1112?
Yes, yes.
The road impact fee, it's in, it's in a separate fund. It's not in the general fund.
This is purely general fund, revenues and expenditures.
What he's asking, you know, the huge road impact fee that we end up having to, having to refund, right?
That was done, yes.
That has been done, and we do have road impact fees that are charged, but they are reasonable road impact fees. They're not the excessive road impact fees to have been, that was refunded.
And they're buried in the building?
No, they're, they're within a separate fund, and it's part of a building permit fee that you pay based on valuation.
But aside from these revenues?
Correct, because these go straight into the general fund versus what goes into the road impact fee fund over here.
And what expenditures are incurred out of that fund?
Streets and roads.
Right, capital.
Capital, capital projects, capital projects, streets and roads only. Can't be spent on personnel, can't be spent on anything other than streets and roads.
But is that also covered out of the capital funds, or the parcel tax? Including central parcel tax?
Right, the parcel tax goes into the capital.
So it's combined with those two together?
But they're still separate and distinct funds.
But they're going to common projects?
Correct.
We're just dealing with general fund right now.
Yeah, this is all general fund right now.
Like leveraging grants from different sources.
Yeah, which we're not talking about. So, we're going into public works, right?
Correct, public works. Public works has a reduction of about 118,000 expenditures from year to year. And 86,000 of that, Robert, was a single source.
That was the, that was the building portion. About, the total of it is due to, the 96,000 of it is a change in the benefits, hour benefits, region benefits. And 22,000 is operating O and M expenditures. So it's a net across the departments, about, all different departments within public works of about 118,000.
Because within public works is parks maintenance, engineering, street maintenance, building maintenance.
Building maintenance.
That's pretty significant, yeah. And is that because of the outsourcing of parks maintenance or?
It's because of the outsourcing and some of the changes in Steve making in MCE contract and other things that you see.
Yeah, we started, if I may, in 1112, we took a real, you know, that was a nine-month year when we started the project up. We were still planning a huge amount of things like unemployment insurance and the residual benefits that things from the workers that were laid off. But we were working with a nine-month budget, we really didn't know what we were going into, so it was a little on the fatter side. 1213 was the first full year of the contract, and it looks like we're going to be just about right on that number. There will show a little bit of savings, and that's reflected in the 1314 budget. We're, you know, like, the street and parks are going to go up a little bit, things like some of the facilities are, we were a little overburned in as far as our budget numbers, so it's balancing out pretty well. Those are all true costs. Those are not money that's promised any contractor, it's only for work that's done. So, we're getting pretty close.
Are you made whole by Caltrans on El Camino? Are you made whole on El Camino by Caltrans?
I started here in 2002, we had an $8,400 a year maintenance agreement. We're now up to $36,000 a year, I believe it is, Robert. $36,000 a year, so it's definitely enough to be made whole. The first few years we had that contract, we spent a little more than that. Some years we've spent less now, so we're, it's a pretty good number for us to work with, to be able to do tree work and all those areas. It's enough to keep up El Camino now. Especially with the new-
The safety department is what I'm really concerned about there.
Well, it's enough to maintain what's there, it's not enough to improve anything, it's, yeah, it's enough to maintain, to be able to see the signs.
I think our safety negotiations are helping, you know, for the-
Crosswalks?
Yeah, the crosswalks and the hazard light, hybrid.
Hybrid beacon?
Hybrid beacon, right, that should be, it's not passed in here at all, that's something that we will-
It's one of the projects for next year.
And we applied for a planning grant that will hopefully give us the data to be able to work with Caltrans to convince them that we do that. Their, their current projections are, yeah, they could do something in 2017, 18. By the, the town taking some assertive action to get the planning grant, which we hope to get, we would hope to be able to advance that schedule and implement safety improvements sooner.
Do you know if Sam Trans has sent a letter of support in on that yet?
I, I know I had four or five letters, I don't remember, okay, Lisa said yes. And we got them from the, from the county, we got them from the school district, and several Redwood City and other jurisdictions as well.
So now the fun one. The police department.
So can we give a description? Could you, you know, the department to provide the services and operational focus, so we can just kind of go- Because there were a couple of things that I wanted to add, if I may. Because I think that this is, you know, pretty detailed, but where does protecting the nine schools within our boundaries come in? I think that is something-
Where is what coming in?
The strategic and operational outlook for police services. See how they've got, you know, the description under that, that they're, they're responsible to direct the provisions of quality law enforcement services, ensure the fair and impartial enforcement of all laws and ordinances, investigate and respond to all citizen complaints, maintain the public's trust and confidence in the police department, help promote a high quality of life for our residents, ensure organizational accountability at all levels, provide the city manager a SCAC report, and assist with designing and implementation of policy decisions. I think that's all good, but I think one of the things that I think is one of their critical duties is to protect and maintain safety in and around our nine schools that are within our boundaries. Because, I don't know, I did a, I did a study of how many schoolchildren come to school every day in our, when school's in session, and there's about 7,000 students, and it's growing, that number is growing. Sacred Heart's increasing, Memorial School's increasing, Memorial College is increasing. And there's, that's equal to the amount of residents we have. We have less than 7,000 residents, and so, every day-
Like a community with a larger daytime population.